Good evening and welcome to the Monday, May 11, 2015 Board of Education meeting. We'd like to start off the meeting, please, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As has been our custom lately, we're going to kind of, I think, move around some of the agenda items to allow people who are facing, say, AP testing going on right now, you probably have better places to be than with us, and obviously you've got some family members, so I'd like to move to student rep-- let's go to item eight, first of all, Student Representatives. Do you have reports for us, each of you?
Yeah, I'll start.
All right. So at Melissa Jones right now, the fourth graders are currently taking their Smart Balance testing on their Chromebooks, and everything's going very smoothly and according to plan. And then this morning, the Baldwin Select Orchestra performed at Melissa Jones, which the students and faculty all enjoyed to see the musical talent of the students who are older than them. And at Melissa Jones, they're now planning their talent show, which is coming up soon, which will take place in the next week. And so the children are practicing and trying out for different spots. And then the fourth grade, or the fourth grade took a field trip to the Florence Griswold Museum in Old Lime to learn about an art style that I in fact never heard of, which was very interesting. And then at the high school recently, there was a Unified Sports Tournament just a few days ago, and except we won, we got 2-0 record. And then spring sports are in the height of their season currently, and specifically the boys' baseball team won their first, I believe, three games on their new, brand-new field, so it's a good way to inaugurate a new field.
At Calvin Leet, the Student Council broke ground for the new community garden on April 26th, and this was funded through a grant from the Guilford Fund for Education. In math, students in all grade levels are currently working on activities that are more focused on geometry. Second graders completed environmental science projects on the theme recycle, reduce, reuse. I think that's in the wrong word. Fourth grade students are recently traveled to the Florence Griswold Museum as well to look at works of, works by the artist Peter Haley, and old lime colony artists. And at the high school, seniors have made their decisions on college, and the new high school is coming along as well.
At Guilford Lakes, one major event was Unified Sports Day, and the Guilford Lakes Unified Sports Team began their April vacation by participating in the area's Unified Sports Celebration. And students and staff traveled to the New Haven Athletic Center for the event, and team members participated in volleyball, basketball, baseball, and track events. And each member of the team received a medal during the closing ceremonies. In other news at Guilford High School, the Guilford High School Robotics Team placed sixth in the nation for our division, which is really big news. And on May 1st, Guilford High School held an assembly for American Idol contestant Nick Faradiani, where he gave students a musical performance and shared some stories from his time at GHS. So that was also a really good time for Guilford High School students.
And then at AW Cox, it's been a very busy month. They have, they're in the middle of their Smart Balance testing, and the third graders have completed their tests, and the fourth graders are a few days into it. Everything is moving along very well. Then Baldwin Middle School Orchestra also came to visit today, actually, and they put on a wonderful performance for the entire school. And representatives from Life Heaven spoke at our lunchtime lecture series. A group of fourth graders decided to help out by purchasing and donating household items that transitioning families need. And then here at the high school, junior prom happened about two weeks ago, and everything went very well and smoothly. It was a lot of fun. I was actually there. And also, we're in our second week of Smart Balance testing, so the rest of the juniors are taking the tests today, and we actually, everything was going very fine and smooth. And then today, they had a problem with the Wi-Fi, so they had to cancel the test, so the juniors didn't take the test today. And then also, it's our second week into AP testing, and that will be ending Friday as well. And so everything's been very well organized for both tests. Also, it's a new requirement for Smart Balance that it's a requirement to have to take the test in order to graduate. And that's pretty much that's going on.
Great. Okay. Questions, comments? Excellent. Sounds busy. Yes.
I have a question. I've actually been asked by a couple of parents. They heard that there was money left over from the high school, and they've been hearing different things of what's going to be happening, of what's going to be planned, or if it's going to go back to the town. So they were just wondering if you guys have any idea. And I said, oh, well, I'm on the Board of Ed. I can see if I can get that answer for you.
It's an excellent question, and it's not our decision, because there is a building committee that was appointed by the Board of Selectmen. Once the project was approved at referendum, the decisions on how to, how to build a building have been made, and what to do, and what, after we prepared specifications, then it was up to the committee to implement it, and, and what to do, how to, how to meet those specifications, which some specifications could be met, some couldn't, and so it's up to them really to try to balance that. We are going to be talking about one issue later this evening. I think the, the building committee has asked us for our opinion about whether the, they should vote to add a second artificial turf field.
Yes, that's what they meant, that's what the parents were talking to me.
Right. So that, that is, I think, something that really, that we're going to discuss, but it's, it's up to the committee. It's up to the Guilford High School Building Committee. Whether there's going to be money left over or not, quote unquote, is still a little bit uncertain, because it's, that building, the new building is getting close. I mean, according to, Mr. Messeny has moved, has graduated from his level of high enthusiasm to almost--
Ridiculous enthusiasm.
Hard to measure enthusiasm, as you may have noticed. His, his anxiousness has, I hope it's peaked, but, because I don't know if there's much room to--
No, I don't think so either.
I don't think so either. So, but the bottom line is that it's still going very well, as we understand it, and is within budget. And there are some unknowns, obviously, in taking down this building, but, you know, I think everybody on the Building Committee and everybody on the Board of Ed is hopeful that it will continue to be within the budget, and whether there's something else that they do. Hopefully, they'll seek our opinions, but that's, that's where it is. Do you all have thoughts about an additional turf field? I wonder how--
I think that would be a great, great addition, because I know that it's very hard for, especially in the fall, for soccer players. And I also know for lacrosse, it's very hard, because the girls' lacrosse has the early practice, and the boys have to be here until nine at night, because there's too many, you can't practice. So, and I think they have a really hard time with material and long hill because of just like the grass and like how, like very dense and watery it is. So I think that would be a great addition, because it would cause more unity within our campus rather than outside on campus.
You're, you're nodding your head like--
Well, for soccer, I know for the boys and girls, we had to go to Leet and Cox, which are two great places to train. But it was also a bit annoying, because you have to rush from eighth period to get to the locker room, to get your stuff to change, and get on the bus really quick, and then go to, go to Leet rather than just stay at the high school. And then when we play teams like Daniel Hand at their turf field at Surf Club, we'd like not really be experienced with like playing on turf. It's a completely different game, because we have to practice on grass fields. So I think that second turf field would be really good.
I actually have a question. I'm just, I can see the presentation up already, like ready to begin, and I'm just wondering if, like, if it's down to, like, if the decision has been made that if there is any extra money, it will be going towards a field, because this is, this just says synthetic turf field versus a natural turf. So, I know that there were, and I know there are a lot of things that go into a decision like this, but I know that other things were being considered earlier on in the new Guilford High School project, like a black box theater, for example, that was cut, but there is still, like, opportunity for that in the future, possibly. And I was just kind of, and again, like, I know there's a lot that goes into a decision like this, but I was just wondering if the decision has been made to fund a field if there is any extra money, or if there are other options still available.
I can respond to that.
Sure.
Well, there's going to have to be another playing field, because as part of the construction for the new high school, and we're going to have to have parking and stuff like that, the existing fields are going to go away. And so the question is, do we replace, do we build a new practice field, which is a grass field, which is what we have now, but we're having to build it in a different place? Or are we going to build a turf field as a replacement? That's the issue. But we've got to do one or the other, because otherwise we just have only the one turf field up here, and it wouldn't, I mean, you wouldn't even be able to do PE classes if you don't have the second field.
But to be clear, the grass field is what we're planning for. There is going to be, the grass field is planned for.
Yeah, that was always planned. And the question is, are we going to upgrade it to a turf field, and does that make economic sense over the life of the field? And we're going to talk about that tonight.
Right. But the decision, as I understand it, has not been made. That's why the Building Committee has asked for our opinion. And so I, when do they meet? Is it next--
They meet tomorrow evening, and they'll be looking to hear this board's opinion on grass or, or turf tomorrow evening. But it's going to be one or the other.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions? You know, are we going to, the robotics team, that's, that's exciting, sixth in the country. Now, last year, they came and did a demonstration--
They brought a robot last year, so yes, I'll work with Mr. Messenti, and we'll talk about having them come visit this year. That's very exciting.
Yeah, that's big stuff. Terrific. Okay, anything else? I think maybe we could go to number seven now, if we can just ask the student reps to stick around for just a couple of minutes.
I think they can hang around for a few more minutes, and I'd like to invite Mr. Messenti to come to the podium. I think that you are all familiar with this year's award recipients, but I'd like Mr. Messenti to say a few words before the recognition.
Catherine and Joe, can you come forward, please? Can you stand right over here? I'm really proud to present these two fine, fine people with the Cabe Award this school year. You know, I thought of bringing the resume, their resume with me. I've written letters of recommendation for both of them for colleges, so I know them inside out. And I thought, well, I'll just read the letter, or I'll just get my resume and start really talking about all the things they do. You know, don't let her, her good looks fool you. On a hockey ice rink, she will knock you silly if you get in front of a goal, so I want you to know that. But don't let the shy, you know, kind of reserved guy get, get you fooled. On a football field, he'll knock you silly as well. So, you know, they have a different side to them besides just standing here and looking very proper. But they are great young people. And so I just thought I would just say this, and I can't make this any more powerful. I've been a high school principal 25 years, and these two young people, if I had to put an all-star team together of students that I can think of over those 25 years, who really embody all the good things that go on in this school. These two represent hundreds and hundreds of kids that are walking these halls just like them, who come to school every day and do what they're asked to do, and ask questions like Mark just asked, or Catherine just asked this Board of Ed. They think for themselves, they advocate for themselves, and they're just wonderful, wonderful people. Their parents have done a tremendous job in terms of, of getting them prepared for high school. They're prepared for life after Guilford High School. I can't say enough about the two of these young people. Leaders among their peers, respected by their peers, and they really are credible with this faculty and this staff. And that's one reason why they're on the Board of Ed as Student Representatives. I'm really going to miss them. Catherine's going to be going on to Fairfield University, and I, they are lucky. They will get her in that community, and she's going to add so much to that university. And my main man over here is going south. I'm going to put a little southern accent on there for you, because you've got to start liking grits. He's going to go to Virginia, and a tremendous university, and I know he's going to love it. Just came back from his brother's graduation at Clemson, so mom and dad are going to spend some more time in the south, a little bit with Joe. So--
Mr. Chairman, on the behalf of Guilford High School, Mr.--
Welcome.
Yes.
Thank you, Joe. You've been a contributor to the Board of Education for, for now, this academic year, this school year. We valued your opinions, we valued your report. Mr. Messeny's recommendation is, comes, it carries a great deal of weight with us in terms of what, what, how you've contributed to the success of Guilford High School. We know that you're going to continue to succeed. Going to University of Virginia is an outstanding accomplishment. Of course, as a Wake Forest grad, I kind of would have rather you--
[laughing]
--to Wake Forest, but I understand. UVA is not a bad safety school. So we're, we're, we're very proud of you. We, we are grateful for everything that you have done here, and we wish you nothing but the best of luck moving forward.
And Catherine, this award is well-deserved, recognition of your accomplishments in the past and everything that's, that's coming at Fairfield University. And I'd like to just point out and echo what Mr. Messenti said, that this lovely certificate recognizes you for distinguished leadership in school activities and daily life, every day. So that's, that's very impressive, and so happy for you and your parents. And thanks again every month for serving on the board and giving us your insight. Thank you. Best of luck to you.
Well, you can at least now say that you heard Mr. Messenti try to do a southern accent. Nonetheless, he tried. We'll work on that moving forward.
He came for--
Yeah, that's not the same. Not the same. Okay, so we're, now, anything else on Student Representative Reports? We okay? Well, we wish you well, obviously.
Chair, I just can't let tonight fly without saying something. Our president did not leave right now--
Come on.
Well, Mark just talked about your trip over Washington, the thing that you won for art. I want everyone to know this.
Oh, that's nice.
Don't put him on the spot.
I submitted a piece that I made in my art class this year to the Congressional Art Competition for 2015, and I won first place for the 3rd District of Connecticut. So on June 24th, they are going to, Rosa DeLoro is going to fly myself and a guest, which will be one of my parents, to Washington DC for a reception and a tour of the Capitol Building, where the piece will be hung for the next year.
Fantastic. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's great news.
Can we get, can we get like a picture of it somehow, or something hanging up there in the Capitol?
If you send something to me, Mark, I'll be happy to share it with the board. That would be great.
I might find its way into, I don't know, some kind of--
I might picture that in a newsletter, maybe. Yeah, I think so.
Terrific.
Great. Congratulations.
That's fantastic.
Good luck.
Okay, well, now that we have, where are we? Let's, do you want to, yeah, we want to go to minutes, or, no, I'm sorry, let's go to--
If you guys would like to be excused--
Yeah. Or, or if you want to stay--
Or if you want to stay for the discussion of the turf field, if we go to that right now, you're welcome to stay for a few minutes. Either way, it's okay either way. It's perfectly okay either way.
So let's, let's, there are people here who I think are presenting on the turf field issue. So why don't we move to 10.9, please, to discuss for possible action requests from the High School Building Committee concerning additional artificial turf field. Mr. Sands, I think, is going to lead the discussion, at least for now. And then we've also got some, I know, representatives of the community here as well.
Okay. Well, at the last Board of Ed workshop, the issue of economic analysis of the turf field versus the natural field, or the grass field, as the replacement practice field here at the high school, was brought up. And after a short discussion, it was decided that we should come back with a more fulsome analysis of this, which that's, which is what we're going to do briefly here tonight. I have with me the chairman of the Standing Fields Committee here in town, Paul Schmidt, and the head of the Town Park and Recreations Department, Rick Maynard. So if people have questions, board members have questions, we can, we have the experts here. Can we go to the next slide? All right. I think that to understand the economics here, it's important to see what's involved with trying to maintain a grass field. It turns out, when we asked Rick to really look at this, and, and we're talking about a grass field that can, is a multipurpose field, but is also one that we can do real events on, games and things like that, there are a lot of steps. I mean, you've got to mow it, you've, there's fertilizing, there's, you've got to put seed on it, you've got to aerate it, you've got to do the lines, you have to resod the goal areas quite regularly, you've got the irrigation. And as the board knows, the, the way this works is Park and Rec does the actual maintenance on the fields. They have the equipment, they have the, the expertise. But the Board of Ed, by the way, pays for the water. And lately, we've been learning that the, almost every month, when the irrigation has taken place, we've been kind of surprised with what these water bills come in at. But, and given that we haven't had any rain lately, that's probably going to continue. But anyway, it, it currently, it's running about $30,000 a year to maintain a grass field. And we've assumed in the analysis that you're about to see that that goes up at 3% a year over the life of the field. Can we go to the next slide? This is the key to the analysis. The synthetic turf field is going to cost about $900,000. And to put a grass field in at that location is going to cost $460,000. However, there is a big difference in the maintenance cost. And that's why I tend to think of this as we pay a little extra for certain features at the high school, and we cut down the maintenance. Well, it's the same thing with one of these fields. The, the upkeep for a turf field is relatively minimal. You don't mow it, you don't have to irrigate it, none of that stuff. So there's this very substantial savings. And the life of the turf field's approximately 12 years. You do have to do some repairs in the sixth year, and on a grass field, you would have to resod at least half of it, part of the way through the life of the field. That's assuming that you don't get any damage. And I want to talk a little bit about damage here in just a minute. And then, when you think about the usage, the synthetic field has the advantage that you can use it when it's wet. And you can't, it's not that we don't, but you shouldn't use a grass field for a athletic event when the turf is wet, because you'll just tear it up. And as an example, our premier turf field that is, the grass field, which is Bittner, is offline right now, because in the fall, it was damaged by heavy play, and won't be ready for the spring soccer leagues. And hopefully, will be ready sometime later in the year, but it was, had to be heavily resod, and is offline. So the, one of the advantages is that you get much more usage out of that field. And you don't have all this stuff where it's raining, and we have to reschedule, or we have to send people out to one of the fields at the grade schools, because we've exceeded the hours on the grass field, and we're going to damage it if we do any more play on it. It gives us much more flexibility. The synthetic field can be used much later in the year. Once it starts to get really, you know, as we're getting into the late fall, early winter, you, once again, would damage a grass field, but you can continue to play on the, on the turf field, the synthetic field, you know, until you get ice and snow on it. And then the other issue is that by being able to put, and know that we can schedule, on the synthetic field, we will take pressure off the other fields, because that field can be used from dawn to dark, seven days a week. And it can, all these leagues and, and various activities, they'll know where they can go. And we won't have this issue of having to shift people around, and we won't have the issue of people playing on a field like on a Sunday when nobody is really there. And the Park and Rec comes in on Monday, and the field's been damaged, because it was wet, but they went ahead with the game. So I think that as you look at this, and you look at the difference, it's $12,000 over 12 years, but that doesn't take into account the fact that if we have to resod half of one of the fields, that's going to run you, you know, a lot more than this. And sometime in the 12 years, you're going to have more than one of those. So on that basis, Mr. Chairman, I, I think that the economic analysis here is pretty conclusive.
Okay, questions from any, for any, anybody, Mr. Schmidt, or anybody else?
I just have a clarification on this slide in particular.
Yeah.
We've got 4K at 12 years, and for the synthetic turf field, which even at a, if I'm reading this correctly, a 3% doesn't get us to 57, nor does 30K at 12 years at a 3% get us to 417. Where are those numbers coming from?
Compound escalation.
That, to that extent?
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah, even 3% over 12 years really adds up.
I'm more interested in the usage than the numbers, because quite honestly, the analysis of the numbers, a lot of it's based on labor. And unless, I think, we're in position to say that we would be eliminating positions and so on by not having the turf field, which doesn't, doesn't seem to happen. So that's why I somewhat question the numbers, but they're so close. It's not really about that for me. It's more about the usage. And here we are, you know, from, from age five, we have the kids out there playing all kinds of sports in town. Are they, are we really getting to a point where they don't have the practice time they need, or they can't get to fields? What's really happening now with what we have, where we need to do this? I get the logic--
I can answer part of that. This is a great example. This spring, we have two fields that are out of service. Bittner, which we're going to try to get in service maybe late May, we're going to be able to get that open. And Guilford Lakes School, that soccer field there, we had to totally renovate last year. We had to rip it up, I mean, totally rototill it, you know, bring in new topsoil, top dressing material, fertilizer, lime, I mean, the whole works. So that shut down. And so consequently, I've gotten complaints from a couple of coaches in the youth soccer organization, that there are three teams practicing on one field. Like, Lower Cox, in fact, is where this particular group is. So they have three teams on one field practicing, because they don't have any other space. We put into service a field that's not a field. Up a county road, the Dudley property, it's really, it's a hayfield, and it's leased out for hay. They're not starting to hay yet, so we got an agreement that we could let lacrosse practice there for another week, and then they're, then they can't be there anymore. It's not a field, it's not, it's not even flat, really. It's kind of rolling, it's, the ball goes this way, it keeps going, because it's downhill. It's really not a, it's not a field, but it's a place for them to practice, and, because they have no place else. At Cox, the little playground there in the front of the school, they practice inside that playground area. Again, it's not a field, but it's a place that they need to go. They've gone to Jacob's Beach, using the grass area down there to find a place to practice. So we don't have enough spaces. And if I can just add one more thing, Ted, I think a good example is, before we had the synthetic turf here, there were years where it was a one-season field. If there was a rainy day football game, especially if it was Thanksgiving Day, or any time in the fall, that field was so beat up, the lacro-- the fall, that field was so beat up, the lacrosse could not play on in the spring. It was shut down, because we had to now renovate in the spring to get ready for the next fall season. So it was used, really, it was a youth, I'm sorry, field hockey couldn't practice on or play on it, because it was so rough from the football game. And it became almost a one-sport, one-season field. Now, to me, that was a waste of field. Phys ed classes couldn't go on it. It was used only for football practice, and then it was damaged, you know, for the games, if they had a game in wet conditions, and it was not usable in the spring at all. That's one of the organs we used to, I think, to get the current synthetic turf field. That was, you know, and that's been, been huge. I do have a couple comparative numbers here, that I looked back from July 2012 through June 30th, 2013, so it took a one-year period of everything we had scheduled on our computer on this synthetic turf field here. This is for non-school events, so I'm not even counting phys ed classes, high school games, just, you know, non-school. There were 187 reservations, and this, this includes winter, because there were groups out there in the winter playing lacrosse on there. 187 reservations, 575 hours of use. Again, not counting school activities. By comparison, Bittner Soccer, 70 games versus 187 uses on this field, 70, 140 hours versus 575. So there's a tremendous difference in amount of use a synthetic turf field can get. And I think this spring was a great example. I have to admit, this was an unusual spring. I mean, it was snow on the, on the fields until like early April or something. But our seasons on the grass fields were three to four weeks behind what they normally were. This is the only field in town that, that early, early season, anybody could get on. And Jake would tell you, everybody was calling him, calling me, is there any way we can get on that field? Nothing else was available.
I would remind the board, I know that you know that all of the decisions we make are interconnected, but as we look at things like later school start times, as we look at trying to squeeze more out of our school day and be more efficient around our students, a turf field gives us more flexibility, more efficiency, and if we're looking to have the school day end later in the afternoon, and not start backing up and cascading all of our evening events, a second turf field would allow us to be more efficient with our school scheduling, practices, and contests, as well as being better partners to the community in which we reside.
I've just got a couple of maybe nuts and bolts questions. Is there, the theory, this practice field would be located in this rough, rough area in the front of the building, or where would it be?
Basically, for all intents and purposes, the new synthetic turf field, if we go ahead with the synthetic turf field, would be on the site of the existing parking lot that's just to the north of the stadium field. And it really gives, you know, the opportunity to run an event on the stadium field, have teams warming up on the synthetic field at the same time. You know, one thing I think we all have to remember is that with the program that's been put together for the new high school, we're actually adding an entirely new field over and above what we have today. Okay? So from a maintenance perspective, from an upkeep perspective, we're going to have one more field on the site in addition to what we have today.
So it's not an opportunity to reduce, it would avoid having to add for additional?
Right, no, I understand, I mean, that's an important point. The plans call for a field, and the question is whether, and the plans, in the current Ed specs, it's a natural turf field, the question is whether to convert that planned field to an artificial turf field.
Correct. We'd be converting that proposed natural turf field to a synthetic turf field.
So really important clarification, we're not talking about adding anything new, we're just talking about, right, should this field be finished in grass, or, right?
Yeah, and the, and the field that is being planned for putting in the existing parking lot isn't free either, right? There is, that's the $460,000 cost.
Correct.
And, and I gather, I, from talking to, I think, Mr. Ireland at the last meeting, we talked about, you know, why, what's the rationale for trying to do that now, as opposed to in a year or two?
Well, the rationale is that if you want to head with the natural turf field for $460,000 today, and next year, we all decided we wanted an additional synthetic turf field in town, and we chose that site to place it on, the cost to build that synthetic turf field would be $900,000, in addition to the $460,000 that you just spent building the natural turf field.
All right, so that's, can we agree that's not an alternative?
Exactly. And, you know, when we did the stadium field, okay, we removed all of the natural turf, all of the substrata, 50% of the infrastructure, and recreated the infrastructure to support a synthetic turf field, which is different in some respects than what you need to support a natural turf field.
Different foundation, different drainage, everything is different.
Is there any irrigation system that you'd have to take out? And, you know, the, the numbers take into the count, into account the fact that we would not be installing an irrigation system with the synthetic turf field, but you would have to install it with a natural turf field, okay, to maintain the quality of the turf that we desire to maintain in town.
And there's no thought about lights going on that field?
There are no provisions currently in the plan for lighting as part of projects, I understand.
Okay, well, I asked a little broader a question, because that's getting pretty close to neighbors. And so I think that, that that would probably not be an appropriate field for lights. I think, you know, that would be, I mean, that would be our responsibility as Board of Education, obviously, because it's, it's part of our facility. But I don't, I, I mean, just speaking for myself, I don't think that anybody would, they already get a lot of lights from the football field. I think if there were other lights that were, that were more frequently used during weeknights in particular, I think that would be problematic, just to let you know.
Space was never programmed in the Ed spec, or in the original design to have lights.
No, I understand, I understand.
Just one other, one other thing to point out, Bill, is that when we did the synthetic turf field on the stadium field, we were all anticipating a life expectancy of the carpet to be about eight years, okay? We've got a field today that looks almost as good as it did when we installed it eight years ago. So we're going to get more than the eight years that were originally anticipated out of that, because of the quality of the carpet that we used. The manufacturer's telling us, based on the type that we would like to use, that we could expect to probably get 12 to 14 years out of the type of carpet that they manufacture today.
Let's talk about that for a second, replacement. Now, there is obviously maintenance in a turf field, but, and we get that, and there's much more maintenance in a turf field. But if, once you go through the 12-year lifecycle, you've got on the turf, on the synthetic turf field, you've got another capital cost, right? Let's say, just, let's just use 12 years as a, as a target number, all right? That's going to, that, that cost is going to belong to somebody. And is it going to be the Board of Education, is it going to be Park and Rec, is it going to be somebody else? That's something I think we've got to talk about in connection with the existing stadium field. But what is the plan on that?
On the stadium field?
Well, no, well, let's start with the, let's start with this field, because that's what's before us tonight, and then we can maybe turn to the stadium field.
Well, I think that, you know, in the five-year capital plan for the town, we are carrying a value for the replacement of the carpet on the stadium field in, I think about three years, if I remember the capital plan.
2017, 18, yeah.
Okay. And I guess it's a matter of, I think that's right. Paul?
The number sounds right, yes.
Yeah. And, you know, I think at that time, it would be a decision by the town boards as to how that cost would be effectuated.
Okay.
What's the approximate cost, the replacement, just the turf?
The actual carpeting cost, if I remember correctly, is about $250,000 to $300,000 for the carpeting and the infill.
So it's less than putting the whole thing in, starting from scratch?
Yeah, absolutely.
Other questions, other thoughts?
Do maintenance, what kind of maintenance do we do on the turf field now, in terms of keeping it bacteria-free and to the best that you can? I mean, do we do stuff to the fields?
The maintenance we do is, the drains that are going around between the track and the field, we have to clean those buckets out here, actually, they fill up with leaves and just debris. We do that two or three times a year. We, we sweep the infill, the high-use areas, like, you know, where the goal areas are, and the center area, that's where the high, high-impact areas are, we just hand broom the infill back in there, it makes the turf last longer. What else? We have a sweeper, it's a machine that just sweeps up the Band-Aids and gauze and just debris, and, you know, it's pulled by an ATV. We have another machine, it's a broom that brings, makes the bristles, the bristles, the broom, make the turf stand back up. It kind of rakes the grass, sort of, you know, makes it stand up. And then we contracted, for the first time this year, a company to come in and do some of that same stuff, but also have a giant magnet. And you'll be surprised how much metal came off that field. It was cleats, a lot of bobby pins, a lot of bobby pins. Field hockey, you know, girls' lacrosse, I guess, mostly from the girls. Bobby pins, some screws that may be from the field hockey goals that fell out.
Cleats.
Cleats, yeah, we had a, like a baggie, plastic baggie full of stuff that came off the field. In fact, I brought it to one of the field committee meetings to show the guys how much came off of there. So that, that was done for the first time last spring in the field. I think we're going into our eighth season now, so, seven years we went, roughly, before we had done that. So Jake and I talked about, maybe once a year, we might contract a company to come in with, with doing this, and that's, I think it was around $2,000, maybe, to contract them, you know? But meanwhile, our crew does some of those other things that I mentioned.
Yeah. And annually, we do what's called a GMAX test on it. So it's basically a test to catch the resilience of the carpet to impact, and if there are areas within the synthetic turf that show a subnormal impact reading, we'll go in and add additional infill, in order to bring that reading back up to where we feel it's got to be within the manufacturer's recommendations.
Yeah, that's on the annual, I forgot.
Is there any anecdotal feeling, one way or the other, about the impact on injuries with, with the turf field?
You know, for the, for the eight years that we've had the field, you know, in talking with Chip Dorwin, and talking with Jake, and the trainers, we really can't find an incidence where we can prove that any kind of injury is really a result of a synthetic turf field. You know, we can point to a lot of accidents and injuries on natural turf, where kids have sprained ankles, broken arms, because they've either fallen in a pothole or tripped in an indentation within the natural turf. My son's a primary example, okay? Very bad ankle injury, Donna Calvin Lee. So that's a, you know, a very real issue. But locally, we can't prove, I think, anything that would substantiate that kind of incident of injury.
There was a study reported in a journal called Pediatrics, that showed no increase in injuries in artificial turf versus grass.
Yep. Very true.
Dr. Freeman, I wonder if you can just comment, you know, our student rep mentioned this before, that, that, for better, or fairly or unfairly, for better or worse, there is, seems to be some linkage between the black box theater, which was in our original education specifications, and that the building committee chose not to move forward with, because of the financial situation at the time, compared to this request now, it's, I don't know, what is it, two years later, or a year and a half later, some number of time later? Is this something, I wonder if you can just explain the relationship between the two?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. And in fact, it was something that I complimented the community on when I was still very new here. I think people often have a misinterpretation about Ed specs as you move through an evolving project. The Ed specs, the educational specifications are put together as a starting place, and then you bring in your teams, you bring in your architects, you bring in your construction manager. And in Guilford, what happened, to a greater degree than I have seen in other communities, is that the community participated in that process as well. So when the Ed specs began to take shape and become drawings, and floor plans, and a design for our school, there were evenings at the community center where there would regularly be 30 or 50, or at some meetings, 100 community members who would come in and comment. And there were two areas that drew lots of comment within the building. One were the areas that are generally programmed to the musical and the theater performances. There were three large spaces programmed for the interior of the building. There were to be two large classroom spaces, one for vocal music and one for instrumental music. And then there was a third space that was programmed to be what we have called the black box theater, in addition to the large theater space itself. Through the conversation, we heard from the community, from a lot of the faculty members, the music faculty members in the school system, that there was a greater priority being placed on three music classrooms, not just an instrumental classroom, but one that was specific to orchestra and string music, and one that was specific to band. That change was made, and, at the same time, there was an effort made to hold on to the black box theater as a fourth additional music space. While those conversations were happening, there was also a lot of conversation that was taking place around athletic spaces within the building. Primarily, there had been a reduction in overall square footage in the gymnasium, because we had restructured it. We were looking at a gymnasium that would be slightly smaller than the space that we have now. In response to concerns raised, and in response to questions raised around the athletic spaces, the auxiliary gym was enlarged at that time. I think, as happens in a lot of our conversations, there's often this one-to-one correlation. If something gets bigger, then something else has to get smaller. If we're putting more money into special education, it must mean we're not funding other things on the other side of our budget. So I think the one-to-one correlation is a misnomer. What happened after all of that feedback is that as the project went out to bid, there was a decision made that the gym space needed to be determined immediately. There was no way to have alternate gym sizes. But the black box was looked at as something, and this was all pre-bid, the black box was now a fourth musical space, and we were concerned about how the bids would be responded to, and that space was taken out of the base bid that went out for the school. The bids went out, and they came back, in fact, really favorably, but at this point, the majority of the school had been designed. There is a space that was left, there were utilities that were stuffed up to a wall, so that in the future, if there was a desire to go ahead and add a black box at a later date, the community has that opportunity. But there was a series of forced choices that were made, not theater versus athletics, but in the theater area, in the athletics area. And the black box theater is a significantly large expense. As been noted here, the turf field is substantially different in, in two things. One, it's a much smaller dollar amount. We're talking about a couple hundreds of thousands of dollars difference from a grass field to a synthetic field. We're not talking about a couple of million dollars to build additional space on the school. And because this is outside the building and not part of the major construction, it's something that the building committee has the opportunity to address much later in the process. So there was a conservative decision made around the addition of a black box theater. It made sense at the time. Now that we're later in the project, you commented when the question came up, that it appears that we are well within budget constraints. The BC has a little more latitude to make a slightly different decision, because of the size and because of the timing of this decision. It's not in place of a black box, it's just a different kind of decision that needs to be made. I will say what I know Mr. Masenti will say. The theater and musical and athletic spaces, both inside and out of this building, are substantial improvements over what we have now, and will benefit the students of this high school and the members of this community, far beyond what they've experienced in this building. Nobody, no community group in this, in this town of Guilford is going to feel like they got less than somebody else when this building opens. I'm convinced that it's going to serve all the needs of all of our students.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Mr. Ireland, you've been quiet here this evening. Okay. Well, if there are no other, I have, I was just sitting here to screw that motion. If anybody would be interested in a motion, reading as follows. If the Guilford High School Building Committee is clearly satisfied that the construction of the new Guilford High School and demolition of the current Guilford High School will be accomplished for at least $500,000 less than appropriated amounts, the Board of Education concurs that use of approved funds for an additional artificial turf field is reasonable and should, artificial turf field in lieu of a natural turf field is reasonable and should be approved.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Sands, make the motion in a second. Okay, discussion on that?
I will say, I think Ms. Renner asked the right question. The, the, I was a kind of an agnostic on the stadium field, I'll have to say. I didn't really get, I didn't get the difference in the usage rates between the, the old turf field, which I remember, and the new turf field, which is, you know, you never, you never drive by here without seeing somebody on that field. That's true. That's the right question. This is a, it's, it's a multiple of three, or four, or five times the amount of use for, for the same amount of money. I, I, I think, I echo what Dr. Freeman said in terms of what the, what the, where we are in the process, and I think this is a reasonable, reasonable approach.
The administration is in favor of this decision. I know that I speak for Mr. Jarvis and Mr. Masenti and myself when I encourage the board to vote favorably for this motion. to vote favorably for this motion.
Can I just ask a question? I'm actually not opposed to the turf field, but I'm just curious why the building committee doesn't just make the decision on their own? Why are they asking us about this particular item?
I don't know. I have not had any real, I don't, did they make, they made a formal request of us this time, didn't they, or semi-formal anyway?
They did. I think that the building committee is confident in areas around maintenance and upkeep within the building. In this particular venue, they want to know if the Board of Education wants this upgrade. So before investing this kind of money in upgrading from natural grass to synthetic turf, they want to know if the Board of Education wants this upgrade. So I have told them what I just told you, that the administration is in favor of this, and they made a formal request of this body. Is this something that you'd like to see happen?
Yeah, and I'm delighted they answered.
Yeah.
What she said's kind of missing, though, is that not talking about black box theater or the arts or anything like that, but we don't know if there is anything else that's under consideration. You know, we're getting like a little peek into this one issue, but we really don't have the big picture. So that makes me somewhat uncomfortable about, I don't know what the wording was recommending or how to just...
I think that's part of the rationale for the request. I think they understood that there were some community thoughts about it. I think it's great that the students raised the questions they raised tonight. I think that the B.C. is sensitive to that feeling of a one-to-one correlation and so really wants to know, is this something that the school and the board value and want to know that they've got the support of the educators if and when they decide to make this upgrade? So that they aren't alone in facing the idea that you didn't pursue the black box, why did you go with the turf field in the 11th hour? So I agree, like Dr. Allen, I think it's a positive that they, Dr. Myers, I'm sorry, that they requested.
My patient used the pole.
I haven't done that before. I think it's a positive that they've asked for your input on this.
Well, it seems to make sense with the, just the educational mission, when you can triple or quadruple the usage rates we heard from Mr. Maynard, 100 some odd to 500 some odd, for the same cost approximately over the lifetime, it frankly seems like a sensible conservative move to make, not going out on a limb, it should be done.
I agree, and it seems to me that, you know, we've been short of fields in Guilford for a long time. Way back when my children were buying and they're in their 40s, we didn't have enough fields. With this, we have an opportunity with one field to increase the usage that our access, that our kids will have, and it seems to me that this is a really smart way to spend our money.
Just to be clear, I'm not, I don't need to be convinced that it's a great idea. I think, I have athletes, they use the field, I was just, I'll take, in Chris's absence, it was just the process of why, you know, we were being asked to give such a formal approval on something when they picked out the chairs and the stuff like that.
Well, the administration had a pretty big role in things like that, and we've had representatives at many, many of the building committee meetings, and I can tell you that the meetings I've been to, and you asked another good question about, you know, what else is going on? I can, the meetings I've been to, there wasn't anything close to this level. I mean, they're literally talking about colors on the walls and what kind of tiles to use. I must tell you, I don't want us to start doing...
Recognizing that...
And it is worth noting that you guys did approve all the FNE, I mean, all the furniture...
No, no, I mean, in money...
Right, yes. We didn't go into a lot of detail.
And that's fine, I just...
Yes.
But I don't think there's a lot else going on, and I, they, they did ask, you know, and so I certainly don't want to, you know, be, you know, be hesitant, you know, in light of their seeking our opinion. They have, I think, the administration, and really having a board representative to that committee has been, I think their communication's been good. I think, though, Dr. Freeman's right, this is different in that it's outside of the ed specs, and I think they're right to seek our opinion.
Yeah, and recognizing that there are no do-overs. If we were to redo the ed specs, it would make eminent sense to put an artificial turf field instead of the grass field back then when we approved the ed specs.
Well, if we'd known what the bids were going to come in at.
Right.
Right, I mean, that's...
Looked out with our crystal ball and know what the cost was going to be.
Yeah, but I, you know, it's got to be crystal clear that there's no more money. You know, there's nothing on property appropriated amounts, and so, and I know the committee has been very, very, very aware of that, and I think they've done an excellent job on cost control and making sure that this happens within the appropriated amounts.
And the phrasing you chose with the motion is important. It's, this is...
This isn't an add-on.
Endorsement, if there is at least $500,000, yes.
Because, and that's the reason, that's the marginal cost.
Right.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, you made the motion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or extensions? Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You will report that, somebody will report time back to the building committee?
I will be at the building committee tomorrow evening, we'll report that. I'll give Mr. Pinkney a heads up that we're closing this meeting.
Okay. Now that we have made a complete hash of the order of the agenda, listen, shall we, we've done the Pledge of Belief, it's right?
That's right.
Shall we go back to item three, minutes of April 6, 2015, regular meeting? Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any changes, corrections, additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, April 27, 2015...
Can I abstain? I wasn't here.
Okay. Ms. Renner abstains on that. April 27, 2015 workshop meeting, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any changes, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions? Okay.
Public forum for topics on the board agenda?
(laughing).
The public shakes its collective head.
Again, the public shook her head.
Dr. Balistraci is reviewing the minutes, or, I'm sorry, the expenditures for the month.
Expenditures for the month, yes. So for April, expenditures for the month of April were $4,478,780.12. Expenditures and encumbrances through the end of April were 72.78% of the budget as compared to 70.59% in the prior year. The current projection at this point is that we will end the year with approximately 100,000 of unexpended and unencumbered funds. We did discuss this in the operations committee directly before this meeting. This number could change and is being watched very closely. Again, we covered this in more detail during the operations committee meeting, but just a few points, salaries and employee benefits in terms of expenditures approximate the prior year. Purchase services is a bit higher. Tuition, as we've known for a while and have been watching for some time, is a bit higher. Supplies and materials is lower than the prior year, and capital and transportation is a bit higher. But again, we are quite close, as usual, to our expenditures and encumbrances for April of 2014. And again, we discussed this in the operations committee, I don't know if anyone has questions at this point.
Questions, comments?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the expenditures for the month of April?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Accused.
Accused, Dr. Myers, you're accused, all right. All right, thank you. Item six is communications. I know we all got communications on the Friday annie day event, we can maybe talk about those under your report.
Yeah, I can tie that into my report.
Okay, how about any other kinds of communications?
We had some on the shields.
Oh, yeah, the shields.
And that's something you can mention.
Yeah, maybe you should just update us on where we are on the class shields issue.
Sure.
They're gone from here, as we can see.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Mr. Masenti and I have had a couple conversations with some of the informal town historians. There was a lot of conversation that I think mistakenly came out of some building committee conversations where people thought that the building committee was deciding, one, what to do with the shields, and then there was some concern, two, that arose that the building committee wasn't respecting the history of the shields. Mr. Masenti and I responded to a number of the communications that you all had received electronically, and then asked if we could have a conversation with both Carl Balistraci, who is currently a selectman, and as an administrator in this school, was responsible for finding some of the shields and bringing them out of storage and displaying them in the way that we had become familiar with, and with Joel Heelander, a local historian in the community. What we've tried to clarify is that, one, the decision of what will be displayed in the new high school, I believe, is importantly an administrative decision. I want to be really careful that the Board of Education or town committees don't usurp the authority of the building administration to make decisions about what is displayed in a high school and how it should be displayed in the high school. That being said, the shields are unique. They are a unique piece of Guilford as well as Guilford High School history. So what we've done is really taken two approaches to the shields, and I think people misunderstood and thought it was just the one. The first approach is that we wanted to document, catalog, and archive the shields, and we're doing that digitally. So as the shields have been coming down, a photography class here in the high school has been getting high-quality digital photographs of each and every shield. So they're being cleaned, they're being refurbished, and they're being documented. That was done at the same time that we asked a local graphics artist who came in and looked at some of our earliest shields and sort of pulled elements from a number of shields that were, has now been recreated in Stony Creek granite. And so there is a new shield that captures the history of what we've done. It's got the Latin motto from one shield, it's got an apple flower motif, an apple flower motif that comes from several of them and pulls it together. So as you walk into our new main entrance, there will be a representative shield that is set in the tile floor of the foyer as you enter. We will have a digital display, and we expect that on that digital display, most days, unless there's something really exciting like a robotics win to celebrate, but on most days, there will be a slow scroll of all of the shields that we have scrolling through the years so that when you enter, you walk into the history of the shields immediately. Mrs. Hahn and I are working on putting together a history of the shields, and so you'll be able to read the history of the shields, you'll be able to see the shields scrolling, and you'll be able to stand on this seal that was inspired by the history of the shields. But that doesn't mean that we plan on relegating all of the other shields to storage forever. We will be moving the shields to storage as we move into the new school. We haven't planned where the shields will be displayed in the new school because I really want Mr. Masenti and his staff to move into the building and settle into the building before they start. So what we also talked about is that we've got, there are missing years, but we've got close to 100 years of shields at this point, and there's really no place in this new school that has been designed to show that whole collection all at once. So we did talk about the idea of a rotating collection. Maybe we will find, after we've been in the building for six months or a year, a place to display 10 shields, and that every summer, we will take one from each decade and rotate that collection. There will always be a place of honor where the most current shield will be on display, and we've talked about having some shields displayed in central office areas. So Mr. Masenti wants to continue to listen, he wants to continue to feel the new space, but I can guarantee everybody, we will have the digital display of all the shields that we have, and there will always be some physical shields on display in the Guilford High School. What the exact balance is, exactly where they will be, I can't tell you. The ceilings in our new media center will not be as high as the ceilings in this media center. The commons may have some space, but we want to move in and settle in and make thoughtful decisions about where to put those. So there was a lot of communication. Mr. Masenti and I have had a, we've responded to many of those emails, many of the people who wrote back were very appreciative. I know that Mr. Masenti offered to take a few retired staff members and concerned alumni on tours into the new building to have the conversation, and Mr. Balistraci and Mr. Heelander are very excited about remaining part of the conversation, and it was my impression that they, once they understood the whole plan, appreciated the thoughtfulness of the plan and were comfortable with our thoughts moving forward.
Yeah.
Mr. Boss, I'm sorry, I do have one communication on a different topic, which is I received an email from a parent interested in whether we as a school had ever considered emotional intelligence as kind of a curriculum, maybe that's not the right word, curriculum topic is perhaps not the right word, but somehow teaching emotional intelligence in our schools in a formal way, and cited the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence has a program called the Ruler Program. So I am just noting that that was a question that came to my attention.
Yeah, I had the same note. I'm familiar with some of the early work around emotional intelligence, which came out around the same time as some of the multiple intelligence work. I wasn't familiar with the most recent work out of Yale, but said I would familiarize myself with it a little bit more.
And I said the same thing, that I would look into learning more about it, but...
Most overtly, we do some of that work around things like the advisory program at the high school, which meets on a regular basis, and then there are some responsive classroom-like activities. We don't do a formal responsive classroom program at the elementary schools. So I guess the way is that we don't address it formally as a curriculum, but we do address some of those concerns for students in different ways at different levels. But I said I'd familiarize myself more.
And maybe, can you, I didn't cut that email, can you forward that to the rest of this?
Absolutely, yeah, 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 no, no, absolutely.
Okay. All right, we are up to item nine, I think, if I've counted correctly, Dr. Myers, is that correct? All right, thank you. 9.1, under superintendent's report.
So 9-1 and 9-2, thank you, Mr. Boss, are sort of plumped together. It is that time of year again where we will be submitting our teacher evaluation and administrative evaluation plans back to the state for approval. I have them here not for action for you because even though that they, even though they are only very slightly changed from year to year, the state still will approve them annually, and I don't see any logic in presenting them to your approval before I know if the state is going to approve them. So they're here for your information tonight. We will submit them formally later this week, which meets all of the timelines, and once I have received response from the state, I'll bring them back to you for your approval for us to move forward and use them next year. The administrative plan remains completely unchanged from this year. It is the same plan under which we're currently working, which is, in fact, the state seed plan. I will say, however, that LEARN has done very good work with an administrative plan. I'm very impressed by what they've brought forward. I will be sharing that work with the administrative team beginning during the retreat this summer. We're going to look at unpacking that plan, and I expect that we will have a wholly different plan for administrative evaluation next year, either adopting the LEARN plan. Eileen Howley, the new director at LEARN, and Peter Cummings, the new assistant director at LEARN, have done really remarkable work. There are about six other groups in the LEARN area that are adopting their plan this year, moving forward with it immediately. Our administrative team wanted more time to think about it, unpack it, and maybe make some modifications to tailor it to ourselves. The teacher plan remains essentially unchanged, except for a couple of additions which appear on page 12, and they are only the additions of an assistance and an intensive supervision phase to the plan. These, in fact, were elements in the old plan. A lot of what we did last year was trying to streamline the presentation. We were able to reduce our plan by about 30 pages, and these were inadvertently dropped. So the evaluation committee has noted that, we're returning these to the plan. So I can essentially tell you that the teacher plan is unchanged as well. I also want to take this opportunity to commend the administrative staff and the evaluators in general, which at the high school includes department chairs as well. Last year, we talked about being concerned about the workload. We, in fact, earmarked some monies to support the administrators in that work. We changed some of the informal observations, we reduced the formal scoring of those, and we reduced the contact time around those. But I have to say that the principals and all of the evaluators have done a remarkable job keeping up with this additional workload this year. We have spent none of that $50,000 that was earmarked to support their work. They have worked collaboratively, they've worked with each other, and I think that the teachers and the principals are finding value in the goal writing as well as in the classroom observation components of this plan. I think we're still struggling to find value in all the components of the plan, but in those two areas, we've seen higher quality instructional conversations taking place, and they're getting the work done, and I applaud them for that. And I think that there's a value in the work that is being done. So they're here for you tonight, they're in your packet, I wanted to inform you that we'll be submitting them essentially unchanged from what you've come to see over the past few years.
When do you think the state will act?
We should hear responses from them before the end of the school. We should hear responses from them before the end of the school year, and I don't expect substantive comments this year because they're so similar to what we've had in the past.
Do you think by next month's meeting might be a position?
I'm hopeful, but I think by the August meeting for sure, we'll be able to bring it back to you one more time and let you know that this is what we plan to use and ask for your formal approval. I don't know if this conversation will end now with Mr. Boss.
I don't know, do you have questions about that, or?
No, I was on the committee, and I did attend the meeting, and I was pleased to see that the overall feeling among the administrators also was that things were going much better than even they expected. I think it was expressed, the bark was worse than the bite, in other words. They anticipated things to be, you know, really more difficult, and it's going very smoothly. And I also thought, when we met with all the teachers, there isn't one person that brought up the evaluation.
That's true.
So it's interesting that they must think as well, that it's going well and it's valuable in time.
I think the most important thing that we did is we washed out any of the calculations. There's no calculating whether you are a 3.5 teacher this year or a 2.8 teacher. It's about looking at four areas of practice, having professional conversations, and determining how well you did this year and what you can do to be better, and in fact, that's exactly the direction that LEARN took with their administrative plan. It's all being built around professional conversations and helping people recognize areas of weakness and how to improve. And yes, we will tag a 1 through 4 rating on it because we're required to, but we de-emphasize that, and I think that's taken a lot of the anxiety and stress out of it for all involved.
Great, okay.
I did want to update everybody on Nick Fratiani Day. I couldn't bring myself to actually put that on the agenda, so I noted early dismissal. I do want to say that I received a lot of communications early in the week, when we announced that it was likely, and then that we were going to be closing schools early on Friday. And some of the early communications, which I understand, were concerned about closing school early for something that wasn't directly school-related or wasn't an emergency weather event. There were some communications from single and working families that it was going to be a logistical imposition for them. I tried to respond to every one of those communications and, in fact, validate those concerns. On the other hand, we wanted to really partner with the town and really take the opportunity to celebrate a student who participated in the musical programming here and has gone on to, I think, really exciting opportunities. And so I think it was good for our students to see somebody who's done well in that area. And I think that we've been able to show other examples of students who've done well in business or in more academic pursuits, but to highlight somebody who's succeeding in the arts, I thought was a really exciting opportunity. I will note that even with the early dismissal, we had approximately a third of our elementary populations sign out of the schools even earlier on that day. And even with our early bus runs, I checked with the bus company, and we cleared the southern part of town, I think, just in time for then the event that took place. I think all of Adams walked from school to the green after dismissal on Friday, and to be on the green on Friday, it was really an exciting place to be. I mean, I've said over and over and over again how fortunate I am to have been invited to be a part of this community, but walking across the green on that Friday afternoon and not being able to go 10 feet without somebody stopping me and saying, "Have you ever seen anything like this? Isn't this wonderful?" was really special. And I had high school students stopping me, I had seniors who don't have students in the schools stopping me, and I had parents that were stopping me. I've never seen that many people on the green. The police estimate between 8,000 and 10,000 people. I think it went off without incident. I know that the bus runs concluded without incident. I think that the event ran without incident. The town, and particularly Guilford Police Department, did a fantastic job. I think it was a really positive event. I was really happy that the schools were able to be part of it, and I think logistically, we made the only wise decision. It may not have been a snow emergency, but it was a traffic emergency, I think.
There was no way.
We could not have, no.
I mean, I live on Mulberry Point Road, and I got down to the end of Mulberry Point Road, and I couldn't turn right because 146 was stopped.
Wow.
And, I mean, I don't know how you would have got a school bus through there. I mean, the kids wouldn't have gotten home till 7:00 or 8:00 at night if they had stuck on the school buses, it was crazy.
The event at the high school, there was a private event at the high school, that was a pep rally held for high school students only. We did invite press in to be part of that, and Mr. Fratiani did a wonderful job. He spoke to our students, he performed just for our students, and he talked about his time in Guilford High School and what it meant to him moving forward. Some of his classmates spoke, and spoke about their time with him in Guilford High School and what it meant for them moving forward. Our students absolutely appreciated the event, and then again, to be on the green and to see so many of our students be there, I'm glad that we got to be a part of the day and that the schools were able to facilitate. It was a town event, the town supported the event. There were no expenditures on the school side, other than time and enthusiasm and interest, and I'm glad that we were able to support the town in those endeavors. It was a wonderful opportunity, I think.
Yes, having lived in Guilford a long time, it was wonderful to see so many different generations together on the green, rocking out and having fun. It was lovely.
He and his parents were incredibly appreciative. His mother and father couldn't, they must have thanked us a dozen times for the event at the high school. I never got near them once we got to the green, but they were very appreciative of what was happening. And I said it in the operations committee, but I'll repeat it here, I know that First Selectman Maza was very appreciative of the support that the schools were able to lend. I know that all the town departments chipped in, and I know that he was very pleased with the way that the event came off and appreciated our and your support in the event.
Yeah, I guess I didn't realize that he was in Voices. He was in GHS Voices 10 or 12 years ago, or whatever it was, that's.
In a basketball player, so there was, yes. So there was more than music that.
He was on our basketball team.
Basketball player.
Voices performed the song that he sang with Voices at his graduation, and he joined in. So our current students got to sing with Nick Fratiani on the gym floor. So yes, it was a wonderful event.
And the high school band looked great, marching down, they were really good.
He did a really good Tom Petty cover on the green, too.
Yes, he did.
Well, you know, I think we do need to acknowledge, as you have, and be sympathetic to people who have childcare issues. You know, I think it's fair to say that this is not likely to be repeated anytime in the near future.
I just heard a call it a unique event.
Yeah, it's pretty unique. You know, and I know there was, you know, questions about, why couldn't this be done on a Saturday? It wasn't, it wasn't our choice. It just was not, it's not one of the alternatives, there weren't any alternatives.
I think it was really driven by his schedule. He was only available to us for a certain number of hours, and if we were going to do this with him, we didn't have choice around the time, right? Exactly.
Yeah, and so, but I think anybody who has concern about the educational value of, and arts is part of education, I mean, it is, and we, Guilford values arts. Take a look at the tape of the pep rally at the high school, if you have any doubts.
Portions of which are on our website.
Are they?
Yes, they are, there is video on our website.
Well, I saw it on the Fox website, and who invited the governor, by the way? He just dropped in for.
I think he got wind and invited himself.
I guess you can do that, if you're the governor.
You're the governor?
But no, I mean, that was real enthusiasm, you know, it was. The kids, the current students were just obviously very, very excited about it, and, you know, it's, I, I'm not a, I can't say that I've watched a lot of the American Idol show through the years, but, you know, it's still pretty neat, frankly, to have, as Ms. Dudley said, to have a community kind of together on something like that. And so what happens if he wins? Are we gonna tear this building down or something?
I have already encouraged any recognition of a winning Nick Fratiani to take place on a Saturday or an evening, but I think there are conversations about whether he would come back as a winner and put on another concert for the community.
Well, I don't mean to jinx anything.
An evening concert or a Saturday concert would be great.
Please don't suggest that we're jinxing anything, we're not, we're making contingency plans.
Fox TV has announced that they are canceling American Idol.
Oh, next year? Okay.
I guess they're gonna do one more round, right? So he, he's, I think they were gonna do, one more?
Well, they're gonna finish.
One more season.
There's gonna be one more season, I believe, after this one. Isn't this season 14?
No, this is it.
Oh, okay.
All right, we'll try to, please report back to them.
I will say, I did watch American Idol last week to see the Guilford, and I thought that the kind of video montage of Guilford was really, was really terrific. We were very nicely represented to the world, so to speak, on national television.
It was great, my kids loved seeing, hey, I know that house, I know who lives there, I know, that's pages, that's, my parents drove down from Massachusetts just to see it. It was really exciting.
Okay, well, I'm back on to the traditional educational matters.
Every bit as exciting as Nick Fratiani Day has been the launch of Smarter Balance.
I've been waiting all day to say that. I didn't notice Governor Malloy here for the first time.
So, we've been very busy. All seven schools have begun Smarter Balance, the state test. We're about 65% complete as of Friday. Today, there were a few people doing makeup testing, but tomorrow it'll start again in earnest. We've had, as you know, we started in a staggered manner so that we would have technical support at each school as, you know, for the startups, and so that has worked very, very well. We've had a couple of false starts, one at Adams, and then another rocky day at Adams, and one today at Guilford High School, where we lost connectivity. And so we've had the entire technical team, Mr. Mitchell, Jim Murtaugh, all the building techs have been available as each school comes on, and anytime there's a problem, now that everybody's in the middle of it, they all go to the problem area and try to resolve any technical issues right away. But I can say that I've been in, all seven buildings are in testing. I have watched third graders, all the way to 11th graders, participate, and things seem to be going very well.
I have a question, has it gone down mid-test?
No, well, actually, some at Adams went down mid-test, but what we did is we just either gave them another machine, they logged back on, and when they logged back on, it's exactly where they left off.
Oh, that was my question, that it's programmed to kind of see where they are.
Absolutely, it saves every so many seconds, and so, for example, if a child got sick or the testing session was up and they weren't finished with the test, because it is untimed, when they logged back in the next time into that test, it's right where they left off.
I think it's fair to say that there's not been a lot more issues than there are when we administer a paper examination. When we've administered a paper assessment to this many students, there are, so there's a little more than usual because it's the first time in a new format, but we would have, you know, we had issues with the paper format as well. Walking into the classrooms and watching third-grade students who are scrolling on a touchscreen and answering on the keyboard, and they've got text on one side, they're able to look at the answers and cross out the ones that they know they're not going to use, and just leave a few alive, and then they're going back and looking for the answer within the text before final, it's really, really interesting to watch how they're navigating this assessment right now.
They're using electronic notepads, they're changing font sizes based on what is more comfortable for them, they're changing, you know, the audio. So it really is pretty amazing how proficient they are, you know, with the technology.
Already.
And this is their first time. Fourth grade, well, fourth grade is already finished at Melissa Jones, or almost finished. Most of the other schools started with the third grade, and they're finishing up, and we'll start fourth grade this week. Melissa Jones has flipped, they're gonna be starting third grade this week. Baldwin is completely finished.
Except for a few makeups.
Yeah, so they're, you know, around the 98% mark already. Adams is almost finished with seventh grade, except for some makeups, and they've started on the eighth grade now, and one-third of the juniors have completed, and the second third will go this week.
And remember that juniors who are taking AP tests, complete their AP testing before they begin the Smarter Balance assessments.
Have any parents opted out of the test?
Yes, we've had, very few, actually, but I think I mentioned to you before, there are five across the entire district, three from Baldwin. All of them have extenuating circumstances, so we've talked to each of them individually, and a lot of them have extenuating circumstances. And one from A.W. Cox and one from Adams Middle School. So very, very few, and like I say, all have extenuating circumstances. We also have a couple of students who are EL exempt because they've only been in a US school for less than a year, and so they won't be taking, they'll be doing the math, but not that English Language Arts. We also have one that will probably be eligible for a medical exemption due to a very severe situation. So, you know, there are other reasons other than, you know, a parent refusal. So we've had very few parent refusals, so we're very pleased. Kids seem not to be stressed, the teachers aren't stressed, it's very flexible in that they don't have, you know, this timestamp, they can, you know, stop, pause, come back to it, and in most schools, they're not even saying, everybody start at the same time. It's just like, okay, whenever you get a chance, you should go in and, you know, work on this a little bit.
Buildings have a different feel than they did during CAPT or CMT. You don't feel like you walk into the front door or into that wing of the hall and somebody immediately shushes you. The life of the school is continuing, and the assessment is happening for some of the kids in some of the rooms. It is no longer stop, drop, and assess the way the CMT forced us to end normal work and only do the assessment for a period of time.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much. Anything else on your report?
No, that would conclude my report for the evening.
Board agenda, item 10.1 is to act on some personal items. First of all, ratify resignation of three teachers, Jordi Reban, social studies teacher at the high school, Plan 6 FTE, Carrie Kennedy, a second, a first-grade teacher at Cox, and Laura Shobert, special ed at Leet, all effective August 31, is a motion to ratify those resignations.
So moved. Second.
Questions, comments, all in favor? Opposed? And then we have an appointment.
Yay!
Maybe, maybe, this is, first of all, let's make the motion, is there a motion to ratify, and let's act on it before she changes her mind. It's either really early or really late, it's one or the other. Is there a motion to ratify the appointment of Maria DePino as the middle school mathematics coach at Adams and Baldwin?
So moved.
Seconded.
Is there anything you'd like to say, Dr. Freeman? Or Dr. Keen?
I would say that we're both very excited, as are principals Walker and Hamill. She, it took us a long time to find the right fit for this position. Maria will be coming to us out of New Haven, she's been a middle school mathematics instructor, she's got experience with professional development in the New Haven schools, she's got a rich history with data usage, and.
She was a former trainer, a corporate trainer, before she became a math teacher. She's been teaching eighth-grade mathematics, she has a real affinity for adult learning, and we're really excited to have her on board, and she's excited to come to Guilford.
So we do want to be clear, this appointment would be effective into the next school year. She's not leaving New Haven mid-year, but we're very excited to have her on board. She seems like she will be a very nice fit for the middle. What is exciting is this is the first content area 712 coach that we have brought into the school district. This is different than the literacy coaches that we've done at the elementary level. This is for content area 712 mathematics instruction. She'll be bringing sixth-grade teachers into some of that work, but we're very excited about this appointment.
Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, great, well, that's nice to, nice to have wrapped up. 8.2 is to act on the textbook recommendation. We were presented Environmental Science 15th Edition last month. People have any questions, comments? It's been available, I know, for the last month at Central Office. We did have an opportunity to ask some questions about the teachers who recommended it, were on the selection committee last month. Do people have any comments or questions about this particular? Do people have any comments or questions about this particular textbook? And is there a motion that we approve the use of Environmental Science fifteenth edition at a total cost of eight thousand four hundred dollars?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great.
Thank you.
Then ten point three is to act on, approve an eighteen hundred dollar donation from the Sideliners, one of the sports support groups, for a tennis ball machine, and is there a motion that we approve that donation?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I'm sure, Dr. Freeman, you will express our thanks to Guilford Sideliners for that.
We'll be happy to, thank you.
And, not incidentally, the next one. Ten point four is to act on a, an intended donation of eight thousand five hundred dollars for the purchase of a scorer's table and forty-eight chairs from the Guilford Sideliners for the new Guilford High School Gymnasium. So, very, very generous of the Sideliners. Is there a motion in favor?
So moved. Second.
Can you just comment on what that, what that is, and why, why are we doing it that way as opposed to as part of a building project? Do you know, is it something, is there something special about this, or?
There is, it's a specific scorer's table that Jake was looking for, it wasn't something that was put in. I think that anytime you, anytime you move into the new school, it's something where we could have moved the old equipment over, and the Sideliners wanted to make the contribution and have the nicer piece. I think it will have their logo on it, as the podium here does, so I, it wasn't extra, it wasn't something that was added into the original spec.
Okay, great, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Ten point five, now here's an interesting item, this is something...
I like that way it's written.
Yes, well, I don't, I think that this is something that I don't recall ever voting on before in my time on the board, and that is giving away a part of a school. But there's a good reason to be giving away part of a school, and that is specifically, when Representative Widletz was our state representative, and not coincidentally, the Chair of the Revenue, Finance, and Bonding Committee, she was able to encourage her colleagues in the General Assembly to pass a public act that basically forgave Guilford from repaying amounts that the state had granted us when the science wing was built, back in, what, nineteen ninety-nine or ninety-eight?
Late ninety-seven.
Somewhere around there. So, the only, the, the, the public act says that notwithstanding state law that requires school districts that, that decommission buildings to repay the grants, a pro share of the grants, that if we deeded over, not deeded over, but conveyed the, the science wing to the town for use as town space, that we would not be required to refund up to six hundred fifteen thousand dollars, six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, if, if we didn't use it as a school building, but instead the town used it, because otherwise it would have been accounted in our square footage for the, for the new high school, and so that would have affected several things. But in any event, that is state law, and so before June thirtieth of this year, we need to tell the town, it's yours, and give it to them, and let them do with it what they will. So, does anybody have any questions about that, or thoughts, comments? It was obviously, it's required cooperation.
I mean, it's something we have to do.
No, we could also choose to not do it and pay six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, so I'm not about to do that.
And I, and I want to really thank two people for this, is, one is Representative Widletz, because she, that was a very thoughtful, very, great deal of foresight that she used to try to make sure that, that we weren't penalized for something that, you know, really the new building had to happen, and, and so we, we didn't, it didn't seem fair under the circumstances to, to, for us to have to pay six hundred thousand dollars to the state. But, also Mr. Maza, because Mr. Maza has really cooperated very fully in, in recognizing that this is something that will benefit the town, but will also benefit the schools in not having to repay this money, and he has been very, very cooperative, I know, working with Mr. Bowden and, and the rest of the administrative team, and with the board, to make sure that, that this, this perfectly good space is repurposed and used for town purposes. So it benefits the town, benefits us, benefits taxpayers, and, so I want to, I want to just publicly thank both former Representative Widletz and Mr. Maza for, for a very responsible, thoughtful decision that is in everybody's interest. So having said that, is there a motion that we ratify the, the giving of the existing science wing of Guilford High School to the town of Guilford to, for its purposes, to use as it may?
So moved.
Seconded.
Effective June thirtieth.
Second.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And now we start calling it something else, too.
They can call it whatever they want.
It's not the Guilford High School Science Wing.
We don't remember it anymore, but we've actually petitioned for an address, so there will be, we've got an address on New England Road that will be assigned, yes.
That makes sense.
I just don't remember it.
Ten point six, act on the district safe school climate plan. Is there anything you want to present on this, or?
We presented this to you at the last meeting, again, this is a requirement of the new safe school climate legislation. Mr. Augustine is here, he heads up this district-wide climate committee, he was here, I'm really sorry, Mr. Augustine was here. He heads up the district-wide committee, which is a umbrella committee that oversees the committee within each building. I will say that our plan tracks fairly closely to the guidelines of the state plan. I was at a presentation just recently of some of the work that's being done in Westbrook Schools that I think is really interesting, goes a little bit further than state requirements. Vince has expressed an interest, he and I are gonna be keen to look into this a little bit more, but it's an annual, or sorry, it's a bi-annual obligation that we present the plan to the board and that the board approve the board, the plan, we're here asking for that bi-annual approval.
Okay, is there a motion that we approve the plan as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments, thoughts, additions? Anything? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Ten point seven is to, just a receive item, we did, we did our, our piece of the annual report and gave it to the town in a timely way, and so unless there are comments about the annual report, or, we can talk about it next month if people want to, but it's, I think it's, it's not exactly for our information, it's something we have to do. Ten point eight is to discuss the annual audit report, if people want to. I mean, we, we've talked about it some, it's, I think, as we commented earlier, it's a clean audit, what is it, you called it, no...
No material weaknesses or findings of concern, I guess they're wording.
They have made some recommendations that I know Mr. Maza and the Board of Selectmen are, and the Board of Finance are working with them on, there's a thought that we, it might be thought, a good idea to do a, kind of a fraud or an anti-fraud audit, to see if there are weaknesses in any of the processing, which I think is fine, I think everybody thinks is fine, right?
That's a recommendation that they've made to all of them.
Yes, they've made that to all of the districts, and they worked on Guilford specifically.
Right. So, do people have other thoughts, other comments about the, the report?
I would just add again that a clean report doesn't sound exciting, but it takes a lot of work, and again, my appreciation to Mrs. Trudeau for all the work that goes into this, a clean report deserves to be celebrated, and we've again received a clean report.
Well, for those of you who have access to the internet, you may have noticed that there are school districts around the state that don't get clean reports, so, now, this is actually, it's, it doesn't seem as exciting as, say...
Nick Fratiani Day?
Say. I'm just gonna go with Smarter Balance, then.
We're not gonna give you a parade.
I guess, but no, this is terrific, I think we have a high degree of confidence at the financial, the accounting and the financial issues within the district, Mr. Trudeau and Mr. Bowden, both are really in very good hands, and we are, this, this isn't, when you get a clean audit, clean report like this, it's not an accident, it's not a coincidence, it is a lot of hard work that goes into it, and so we, I think we need to recognize and thank both of you for the effort that went into this, it's good news.
Very good news.
I'm still confused about the pension funding, I will have to say.
We explained it in due time.
Okay, let me know, I'll put that on my calendar. All right. Ten point nine, we already did.
Okay.
We are up to eleven, are we?
Mm-hmm.
All right, can we ride along? Policy Committee?
We met, we did not meet this past month because we wanted to catch up with a curriculum committee meeting, so we will be meeting again and we'll report after that.
Okay. Operations Committee, was there any...
Yes, our, our health insurance advisor was here again, it seems like he's here every other meeting, he's really been a great resource for us and for everyone, from what I understand. And basically, he reported that the claims are running at projection, which is good, and it appears that reducing the stop loss was a sensible decision, that's, that's worked out properly. So we're, we're on track with where we hoped that we would be.
That's right.
And I think, other than that, we progressed everything, we covered the last part.
Okay. Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee, is there, what we did meet, and what did we, Mr. Kaysen, what did we talk about? It's in the minutes.
Talked a lot about mathematics. I thought we had a rich conversation about mathematics sequencing, I really appreciated the conversation.
And also, I just might want to add that this time last year, we were coming to you for an adoption of elementary math materials, if you recall, in Bridges, and we've given a couple of updates since that time, and because we could not find a middle school math resource this time last year, but we did indicate, we were waiting for the ed reports, which was the new clearinghouse for math resources, and that was released in February, and we did say that we would reconvene this spring, and even though there aren't any new resources published, we're gonna take a deeper look at, at some of those that, that have been published, and come back, and, and we may still come out and say, there's not one that we really feel is, you know, appropriate for us, or we may come back and say, hey, we, we found one that we think we can really work with to give more support for teachers. So I would like to invite any member of the board that would like to participate in the process. We're going to be working all day on May the twentieth, from eight to two-thirty at Calvin Leet Elementary School, and that is with representatives from sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, two representatives from each grade level, then from three to four at Adams Middle School, all the math teachers from sixth, seventh, and eighth are going to come together, they're gonna listen to the representatives report out on all the work that they have done to date, and then try to come to consensus, or not, about a middle school math resource. But we had indicated that we would come back to the drawing board, and we intend to do that. So if there, please email me if you're interested, I can send you more details as far as time, place, or, or reminders ahead of time, but it's gonna be May the twentieth, which is a Wednesday, and that is a faculty meeting day, and so we're releasing six teachers during the day to do the bulk of the work, and then all of the math teachers will be coming together during the faculty meeting time from three to four, to listen to the progress and to try to come to some consensus.
Okay.
And I will have a report to, for the, the next Curriculum and Instruction and Assessment Committee about the whole process, because that's on May twenty-sixth, I believe, and this will be completed by that time.
Okay. Thank you. High School Building Committee, is there anything new?
Here tomorrow at seven o'clock, I will be reporting your decision on the turf field. I don't believe there's any other pressing business on the agenda, no?
Still on time?
Still on time, still within budget.
Okay. Town Committee, anything going around, going along, no? All quiet?
Not quite a town committee, the Health Advisor Committee met most recently, one of the things that's happened this year is attention to, given that the Policy Committee and then the Board passed the most recent kind of revisions to our policy, wellness policy, we spent time going over the forms that our building administrators, our teachers and our building administrators fill out in terms of food use in the school, and prepared those for, for them, so that the teachers and administrators could start reporting back to us, and we are now spending a little more attention thinking about how we can just generally promote not only nutrition, but, but physical health, physical well-being, activity, et cetera, but, so that was a good meeting.
Okay. All right, does the public have any questions? All right, then we do have a very short executive session on the negotiation with the Nurses Union, which is ongoing, so is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second? Somebody's gotta say second.
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Third, fourth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you, we'll be, we'll go into executive session for the purposes of discussing Nurses negotiations, but we will come into public session only for the purposes of adjourning, and there will be no further public votes this evening. Thank you.